Good morning, everybody. I'd like to call to order this special commission meeting of the Taos County Board of County Commissioners on Thursday, July 27, 2023, at 9:07 a.m. Madam Deputy Clerk, thank you for being here with us. Appreciate it. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Romero? Commissioner V. Hill?
Present.
Chair Brush?
Present.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Present.
Thank you very much. Agenda item three is our inspirational devotion. I'd just like to take a moment to express some gratitude this morning. First, gratitude to all of those folks who coordinated and did all of the work behind the scenes to make our last weekend's events so successful, from the Taos Pueblo Healing Powwow to, of course, our fiesta. It takes a lot of work to do that, and a lot of us just see the fun part. So we just wanted to acknowledge the coordination and effort that went behind those events. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge our county staff because our topic this morning is budget, and there's also a whole lot of work that goes on behind that, some of it tedious, all of it critical. So just a couple words of thanks this morning, and just invite everyone to take a moment to think about what they're grateful for above and beyond or in addition to those things. We'll just take a moment. All right. Thank you, everybody. For me, I added on that I'm grateful my family is still healthy. Vice Chair Romero, would you like to lead us in the pledge, or was that going to be Commissioner Mascherini's?
Fine, we'll do it.
All right, thank you. If everyone in the room could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And this takes us to item six, which is listed as citizens' concerns, but we've updated that to a public comment. If there's anyone in the room who would like to take their three minutes, I welcome you to approach the podium, share with us your name and where you live, and you've got three minutes to tell us what's on your mind this morning. Good morning, Mr. Fulendorf.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Brush and Chairperson Brush and the members of the commission. And my name is Steve Fulendorf, and I am the community coordinator for Rio Grande Alcohol Treatment Program. I live in Taos, New Mexico. And I just want to take a moment to, for a few facts that are, for lack of a better word, sobering, and that is that in a state that is at the bottom of the nation in most of the statistical categories regarding addiction, Taos County is currently the eighth worst in suicide deaths, the third worst in emergency room visits due to opioid overdose, and the fifth worst in alcohol-related deaths. And so when taking into consideration the funding that is coming to Taos County for the opioid settlement, I hope that the commission will take into account that treatment, intervention, recovery, and treatment including MAT services, medically assisted treatment, detox, Narcan, intensive outpatient treatment, and aftercare and peer support for those that are trying to get on a path of recovery. We are, we're in a crisis in our county and in our nation, and we need services. And at this point, we have very little. And so I hope that we will put our focus on how to help people to recover from a disease that is treatable. And so I want to thank the commission for all their support. You have been, you've been with us all the way, and we are really appreciative, and thank you for letting me make a few comments.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you for joining us this morning to share those words. And I jumped ahead because I wanted so much, I guess, to listen to the public. Do we, Ms. Niese, do we have anyone online? I don't have the phone number right in front of me. Would, if you're watching online, if you would like to make a public comment, what should we have them do, since I don't have the phone number in front of me? 737-6310. So if you are watching us online, you can feel free to call 737-6310. That is area code 575. We'll give a minute, and then I'll backtrack, and we'll approve our agenda. Guess I'm super eager to get to the meat of the meeting. Okay, it looks like we have one observer who isn't going to make public comment this morning, which is absolutely fine. Thank you for joining us. Backing up to agenda item five, approval of our agenda. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second to approve our agenda. Madam Deputy Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, didn't hear that.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so now this takes us to item seven, Budget Matters. Item 7A is Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding 2023 DFA Resolution Number 51, A Resolution Requesting to Establish Fund and Budget for LG Abatement Opioid Fund for Taos County. And with us, we have Ms. Elsvee Hill, our interim finance director, for whom we're very grateful.
So Chairperson Commission, before you is Resolution Number 51. As, after looking over the books for year out closing and as well for fourth quarter and final, I saw that the fund was actually created and the funds were actually put into the budget for this last current fiscal year. So in order to correct that item, to make sure we have the resolution in place and be in compliance, I'm asking approval to have these funds put in there correctly, so that way we have our paperwork in place with DFA as well. So that way, before we close out our quarter four with DFA, I need this resolution in place for these funds.
Thank you very much. It makes sense, and I would entertain a motion regarding approval of 2023 DFA Resolution Number 52, oh, no, Number 51, A Resolution Requesting to Establish Fund and Budget for LG Abatement Opioid Fund.
Chair, if I may? I only have one question. And the question is, what is that amount that's in that fund?
I think it's like 309.
You said it was in the budget. Yeah, I see it, 309.
It's under 2, it's under 27000.
Okay, my bad. I should have pulled that up.
Yeah, it's like 309,000 and some dollars. Yes.
Thank you, my apologies. I just didn't open my.
It's also included in final, so that way you see that, you know, the funds are being established as well as the budget, so we can start expending those as necessary.
Okay, and we don't have, obviously, that's just the first.
Yeah, that's the first step.
A very small portion.
To establish the budget and fund right now, and then as further discussion goes along, we'll see how those funds are going to be utilized in the community.
So as we get more funding, we'll come back and do a DFA resolution to increase the budget amount. Me and Mr. Otte were talking this morning that we're still trying to wrap our heads around how much money is actually going to come in. So that's, I was telling Randy this morning, I go, I wish we had, thinking about budget, that we would have one source that we could look to and say, okay, this is all everything that we're going to get, so we could plug that into the budget, because we have some of a piecemeal that's not included here, but we, the 309 represents where we, the cash we have on hand.
Got it. Okay, with that being said, I will make a motion to approve, unless someone has something.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve 2023 DFA Resolution Number 51 to establish our LG Abatement Opioid Fund. Madam Clerk, would you please call for the vote?
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes, thank you very much. The resolution passes. So this takes us to item 7B, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding 2023 DFA Resolution Number 52, Requesting to Adjust the FY '23 Final Budget. Ms. V. Hill, still.
So what you have before you is a resolution as well as the printout from LGBMS of the different adjustments in order to finalize and for the closeout of the final budget for FY '23. So this is to adjust different revenues in different areas to, yes, to balance them out. So you'll notice behind it, I don't know if Renell had a chance, my dip provider, the printout, or the LGBMS behind it. No, it's a, it's a long sheet. Does she give it to you guys? No? I had emailed it to her this morning. Do you have it? Maybe we could put it on the screen for them?
And I also don't see the resolution.
I gave it to her as well this morning, so.
Yep.
Because she was missing it, so I did provide it to her.
Yeah, I know I saw it somewhere early this, in Gradicus, it's not there.
Yeah. I think I sent it to Renell, but not to you. Do you have, is Renell?
Yeah, she's there.
Let me have her send it down. That, that's the one. That's it. But I did provide her the resolution itself, and it's, it's worded basically the same way. So can you see that one on the screen? Yeah. So that's the backup entering it into LGBMS that adjusts all those budgets. So when I do get approval and send it off to DFA, and they give me approval to adjust it, when I do that, all those budgets will go back down to zero, so we can zero it out for the fiscal year end, for the closeout documents. And I've had this reviewed as well by our county treasurer. It's, it's, it is a tedious thing. I couldn't believe all the reports finance has to do on the background just to help close out the year-end books, so. Like I say, it's, it's a, it's a running learning experience right now, and amazing on how all this has to happen, just so it runs smoothly for the new year.
Well, we appreciate you stepping up and doing the work. It's, thank you.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. Commissioner V. Hill, just looking at that particular document, the adjustment, can you, can you give a little bit of detail? That adjustment is what, is it, what has already been?
Yeah, so, so basically, let's say one of the funds, we received some funds, and we had about, we had predicted or said, okay, we're going to get 45,000, but we actually got in like 106,000. So what I have to do is offset that balance in the bottom to equal it zero, so that way the fund rolls over at the 106,000, not the 45,000. So that way, the money stays in there, and it rolls over.
So for example?
It matches the closeout, yeah.
Thank you. So for example, the first one seems like we had additional GRTs, which was a benefit in there. Okay, very good.
Exactly.
Just confirm.
So there, there's all kind, I'm telling you, there's so many of them. It's, I, I, like I say, it's a great learning experience for me that I'm learning all this because now I know the background, not just in purchasing, but now in finance, on where all these numbers actually do come from, and where all the funds are coming from. Yeah. So when people come ask me, I can actually tell them.
That's very good. Thank you for the response.
Thank you for the question, and we'll just hang on for a sec while we look for the resolution.
Yes.
I'm not seeing it online either.
No. I have no doubt it's, it's fine. It's just for the record.
Exactly.
Yes. Did, did Renell, did she send it down to you? Okay.
Yeah, I know she was busy making your copies. That's possibly why she didn't.
We totally understand that there was a whole lot going on, a lot of moving parts, no, a lot of moving parts and no pointed fingers. Like, we'll just.
Should we approve the fourth quarter report first?
No, let's stick, let's stick with the order. Is that, is that okay?
That's fine.
Elsa, okay.
We can wait.
But logically, you should, because it finishes after you.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Well, sorry.
So Commissioners, we'll take a moment to read the resolution and then entertain questions from Ms. V. Hill.
I have no questions. I'll make a motion to approve.
Any, any questions? No? Okay, so I believe we have from Commissioner V. Hill, a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay, thank you, and thank you, Renell. Item 7C is next, after we've approved DFA Resolution Number 52, and C is Review and Approval of the Fourth Quarter Financial Report for 2023-24 Fiscal Year Final Budget. Ms. Elsa? Or Mr. Harameo?
So one of the requirements of Department of Finance Administration is that we present the quarterly report, and this is the LGBMS format for the quarterly report, the totals that will get submitted to DFA.
So right now, right now, what I provided to you, usually I give a presentation kind of like final budget, but I was pretty busy doing final, and I didn't get to finish presentation for quarter four. This is a rough draft that got uploaded into the LGBMS system at the DFA side. I'm still tweaking it a little. As I explained previously, you know, our system was missing some crucial numbers in there in order for it to upload the right, the right funds in there. And so the balances in the bottom are a little off. It still needs a little more tweaking on the S400, and so I will export it back out and import it back in, so it matches the treasurer's report. So ultimately, you know, our budget in terms of investments, not investments, I'm sorry, in terms of revenues should equal 61,256,9896. And as you notice, it has 61,9675676. So I'm still looking for that needle in the haystack. It's more of a system issue. Once I do that, I am able to export it, import it, and upload it, and once it's uploaded, and I make sure everything balances out, I will provide an entire presentation booklet with the reports from LGBMS, so the commission have, have it on hand to view it fully for this resolution. Unfortunately, I got kind of stuck on, on final, and I didn't get to finish tweaking up quarter four in time for this meeting, time which just was not on my side. So in between payroll and everything else this week, so. It's been tasking, but, you know, as you notice, you know, ultimately, the cash amount should be at 59,318,63433. So as you can see, it's not that far off. It's just a matter of finding that one needle in the haystack to see what, what didn't upload into the system, but it should match exactly to what the treasurer's report was given to me for fourth quarter.
Thank you, Elsa. And you just repeated, I think, what, what my question was going to be, which is our balance total of 59,349,771 and 6 cents. That's the number that should be 61. You just repeat that.
It should be 59,318,634.33. So it is a little off, so I'm trying to find the fund where there's a missing, where there's missing monies that didn't get uploaded into the system in order for me to balance out with the DFA and the treasurer report.
Please, Commissioner V. Hill?
Okay, so the 59 is what you're getting from, from Ms. Paula?
Yes, I get it off the report in terms of what they did for June and year end.
Right, got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Which go kind of hand in hand with final in a way, yes.
Very good. I understand.
So I don't know if you guys have any other questions. I think what I want to do is ask the commission if, if they wish, if they could allow Brent to have permission, once I do balance it out, to allow me to proceed, because I have to post fourth quarter first before I post final budget with the resolutions and all the documents scanned in and uploaded. And if you have the confidence in me to make sure that this is going to get balanced, I just want to make sure I get you guys the paperwork electronically by tomorrow afternoon, so you can see quarter four for yourself, and I'll probably provide as well as the balances that Paula gives me, so you can compare and see what we did. But like I say, it's just the needle in the haystack. This, the system is really archaic, and it's, it's been a challenge, but I've been figuring out where the errors are at and why they're not uploaded. Mr. Harameo actually had Tina from Tradic come up and look at the system, because I had this prompt for preliminary, and we found out what the issues were, and she's helped me get a lot of them resolved in the last two days. So hence why quarter four didn't get done so quickly, yes.
So what I think I'm hearing, and Commissioners, please, if you have questions, is that we're asking for approval of the fourth quarter financial report, 2023-2024 Fiscal Year Final Budget, with the caveat or understanding that these minor adjustments will be made?
Yes, to match exactly to the books with the treasurer's department.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve it with that adjustment.
Okay. Is there a second? Second, second from Commissioner V. Hill. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay, so that, we have approval.
So that covers C and D then, I think?
That we'll see that, and you'll send that to us by tomorrow afternoon for us to raise any questions or concerns.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it.
Like Ms. V. Hill indicated, she just needs to go back and finish. This is the recap report that she just received the other day from the treasurer's office, so it's taking the ending cash balance, making off of that, and the revenues and expenditures off of that sheet have to match this sheet, the way it gets uploaded. So that's where she's going to finalize, so it's comparing the treasurer's data and then making sure it gets uploaded.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the explanation, and look forward to seeing the update. There's that 61 number. Okay, great. All right, moving on to item 7D, which is Approval of Resolution Number 202330. Is that the right number? Manager Harameo, could you check? We just have been looking at, yeah, maybe it is. The other ones are DFA resolutions. Just want to confirm that 2023-30 is the right number.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Their DFA numbers up above threw me off. So this is, 2023-30 is a resolution certifying the final quarterly report has been reviewed and approved to ensure accuracy of the beginning cash balances used on fiscal year 2023 budget.
So.
That, that's where I did ask at this, when we were reviewing what I explained now. That's what, this is what I'm asking for, is to ask that the resolution be approved, obviously with, with, like Ms. Brush said, with the caveat that, with the understanding that it's going to balance out completely when submitted in and getting you that information by tomorrow afternoon.
Motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-30, a resolution certifying the final quarterly report has been reviewed and approved to ensure accuracy of the beginning cash balances used on fiscal year 2023. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mascherini, and V. Hill. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote.
Commissioner V. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Mascherini?
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair Brush?
Yes. Okay, and now we have 7E, which is a public hearing for review of our fiscal year 2023-24 budget, final budget, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at 9:34 a.m. on Thursday, the 27th.
Let me know if I have to slow down, because I do talk fast, too. So thank you this morning for being here. Before you is the 2023-2024 FY Final Budget Report. We have attached to it the certified property tax valuations. After reviewing cash balances for year end and so forth, the general fund revenue projected increase went up to 11.2%. And the general fund expenditure project, a projected increase, was 13.9. So that, the, the projected increases, including all the general fund expenditures, which also includes the comp study, so I did get the final numbers off the salary summary that was provided to me by HR. There are a few changes I am going to explain once we get to the expenditure side on what occurred within that fund. Is it side to side, or? So before you, on the general fund revenue, we have our pie chart, which shows our fund revenue for the new year at $18,484,971. As you can see, 78% of it is property tax, 10% is GRT, 1% is the small county assistance, 7% is others, and fees were, are 4%. So if we move on to the next slide, the next slide actually breaks it out a little more. So our beginning cash went up to $7,991,803, which is what was reported to us from the treasurer's office. Then the investments are at $3,750,000, which give us the $10,841,803. Then below all that is the different categories in which the GRTs and all the ones I just described from the pie chart that kind of make up our revenue, which come out to $18,484,971. So it, it did increase slightly, a little more than what was that projected through preliminary. The transfers in and transfers out, I'll go a little more into that in detail with the, the detailed transfers, which I have towards the end of the presentation, but it does encompass some permanent operating costs that we pull out of the general fund for ABC, for the roads, as well as for our. for ABC, for the roads, as well as for our, our middle section, the senior program, which is the senior companion foster grandparent program, due to their funding shortage, in terms of what they provide for employment for the two individuals who run that program, we are offsetting in the general fund some monies for them to help pay their, their wages and their benefits for the year. I don't know if there's any questions out there from any of you on this page right now at this time? If not, I'll move on if everyone's comfortable looking at it at this point. We're gonna go on to general fund expenditures, and you'll notice the pie chart, the general fund expenditures went up slightly as well due to the comp study and all the, the different increases, including some of the insurances that we were kind of projecting in terms of that small increase. Right now, you will notice, and, and it didn't word it on there right, I didn't catch that, it has percentage on there, I'll correct that for the final, final, on the pie, there's, there's a department missing on there. But we did include the two changes that happened in the general fund in terms of us paying out benefits and salaries is our fire chief and fire marshal used to be under the general fund, and now that they're receiving those GRTs, and because the departments merged to EMS and fire, those, those expenditures went into EMS and fire now versus through the general fund. But we did add in to meet, meet our local match for the senior program, we added in to pay the benefit, the salaries and benefits for the director and she, her, like, co-assistant or, for Don and Alex. So that will be our local match towards, towards the grant funds for the senior program on that end. So it just made more sense, instead of doing memo transfers and moving cash around every quarter to them, we just figured just pull it straight out of the general fund.
Thank you. Could, could you just do me a favor and repeat what, where it says percentage, what that's supposed to say?
Let me look, let me see.
Top right.
That was probably the senior program, that, that percentage should have said one percent. Yeah, yeah, the pie chart, on the pie chart, on the top is the senior program, instead of percentage, it should have said one percent.
Got it, okay.
And I just noticed that now, I didn't capture the one on there, the number one.
Thank you.
So as we go through the, the budget, you will notice the, the first one is the governing body, which is all of you. In there, we have different operating costs.